Counsel, Nez Perce County Special Meeting to Order. Mr. Chairman?
I'd like to bring this to order.
Thank you. The first order of business is the Budget of Allegiance. If you'd please stand and join us in reciting the pledge.
We're the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the interior republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners and Councilors. Next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council and the commission on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to attention of the council and commission. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor or the commissioners in consideration of others wishing to speak. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. When you come forward, please just introduce yourself, your city of residence. The microphones here today are in the ceiling, and I think we have three of them here, one, two, three. So you have to project your voice, speak up loudly, speak clearly and slowly so those watching from home can hear what we have to say. So with that, I will open up for citizen comments.
Hi, my name is Lanaya Noreen. I'm in Lewiston, Idaho. And you might remember my name because I wrote a letter to the editor a few weeks ago about the courthouse. And much to my shock and dismay, I had a whole bunch of people reply to me that actually it was a really good idea, and they were thankful that I wrote. I wrote because I was hoping that there's an opportunity to save the columns that are on the historic facade of the courthouse. It's something that hopefully can preserve our history. It's something that is a very small piece of the overall structure. And when I followed up with the city council and with the county council, and the reason I came here is because the county says, well, it's a city zoning problem, and the city says it's a county building. And so nobody's seemingly able to do anything about this because everybody's saying it's somebody else's problem. So I came here because I am hoping that there is some way that we can, at this juncture, just save those columns, perhaps even the statue, perhaps just a little bit of the lettering, something that depicts what the courthouse was before we have this very modern structure in our midst. So I am here to offer my help if it's a new zoning bill so that we can reduce or change the amount of parking that's needed, if it's something that I can have the people who have contacted me help with some kind of effort to change whatever needs to be done on the county side. We're willing to do what it takes. I think this is a pretty small token and hopefully a very cost-effective way for us to preserve a certain piece of our history. And I think it's also important, and I think the reason why there was so much response, is because we do have a tourism economy here. And we, people, come through town, and they see the historic columns, and they see the historic lettering, and they see that it's something that's special. It's something that's unique about our community, and it's something that attracts people here. So for what it's worth, I and the people that responded to my letter are very willing and excited to help if there is anything that we can do, just a small piece of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Remember, we're going to have questions, but I'll ask the commissioners if they have a response or if they need contact information or anything.
The courthouse update.
Courthouse update. Thank you very much for being here. For further citizen comments. Welcome, Steve. Please introduce yourself for the record. And city residents, the floor is yours. Thank you.
My name is Steve Cooper. I live at 2440 Grill, just outside the city limits of Lewiston. I'm here tonight because I feel real strongly about the importance of merging the two dispatch centers that serve our community into a single, more effective, more efficient dispatch center. I think that we've been fortunate over the years to have been served by these two dispatch centers and served well. However, the opportunity to drop calls, misinformation as you pass from one dispatch center to the second, to not relay all the correct or most valued information on each call when you're working with multiple agencies is great. So I think that for responder's safety, you should consider merging these two dispatch centers. Taxpayer, I think, after the initial capital outlay is completed, you'll find that a merged dispatch center will be more efficient and more cost-effective for the taxpayers in the county. So I believe this is a project that should move forward. You spend a ton of money on a consultant that comes in and forwards a recommendation to you for your consideration, and I support the recommendation that came from the consultant group and the work group that worked with them during the four months. Thank you.
Are we in IT? Are we streaming live?
Yes.
Yes, he said yes.
I didn't hear anything. Pretty soft.
It was quiet, but it was yes.
I saw somebody look in the back door, and I know what that means. Are there further citizen comments today? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to item four, Joint City of Lewiston, Nez Perce County Budget Items. Item A, Emergency Management. We have a presentation from Director Mark Hurd. Director, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record. Please remember to speak up loudly and clearly. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, council members. Mark Hurd from Emergency Management for both the city of Lewiston and Nez Perce County. The first thing I'd like to go over is some of the accomplishments or some of the items that have been actioned by Emergency Management on behalf of the city and the county, primarily what the city or Emergency Management has been doing within the city. First, an all-hazard mitigation plan review was done, conducted for our requirement for annual review. That was pushed. There wasn't many changes until the following year. We're going to do a full review. That puts us in a five-year required review. So that's one project that Emergency Management is looking at. That encompasses all the hazards for the county, to include the city, so wildfire, flooding, such, and what plans we're putting into place or what items we use to mitigate some of those dangers. Second is there's a big funding purchase through one of our grant programs that had to do with the school system. There was identification of, during a response to the high school, that there was communications, radio communications not getting outside of the schools. So through a state grant program, we utilized those funds and actually purchased two repeaters for two of the schools for a total of $13,000. There was also a large bridging and patching, another piece of communications equipment, that was purchased under another fiscal year funds available for a grant for a total of $43,000 that enhanced the communications for LPD and the Sheriff's Department. There is an ongoing collaboration for LPD with the Fire Department as well on medical kits to outfit the patrol vehicles and the officers with medical kits. This will help during any mass casualty event that we have, as well as routine medical care for in case an officer gets involved in an incident, and they require self-care or buddy care on scene. We've also been very busy with some of the IOEM requirements for bringing in training, like incident command training. We did a big 300 and a 400 course, which we had many individuals from the city, from both Fire and PD, and then also from the Sheriff's Department. We were able to give folks a higher level of training on incident command, and we were able to do that locally, which saved money for folks not having to leave the area, as well as really helped with the schedule for the individual stakeholders as well, not having people out of pocket in other locations. And then additionally, a lot of the last couple of months has been preparing for wildfire, establishing relationships, and really working on bringing different individuals, organizations, and stakeholders together. One of the things that we're doing is on the 29th, we'll have an all-hazards mitigation, I mean, sorry, a local emergency planning committee meeting that'll get all those individuals in one room, and we can start talking about some of the things that are going to be coming up over the next six months, which is the Emergency Operations Plan is going to be open for rewrite and evaluation. And at that point, we're going to also include the, begin the work on the evacuation plan for the city of Lewiston, and a family reunification center plan to be included in our Emergency Operations Plan. So that's another big project that's going to be going on. And then another item I'll speak to is we have an upcoming large-scale exercise at the college. So LCSC is going to be the site of a mass casualty incident, an active shooter. It's going to be a very large collaborative exercise that'll involve both the city of Lewiston and some agencies on the other side over in Clarkston. So we're working through a planning committee right now for that training, or for that exercise. It's going to be a very large and complex event, and will be very good for the community and for our responders. So all the department heads have been involved in that process. And then as we continue on, we're going to be looking at, we're restacking or re-looking at the requirements for our fiscal year 2022 grant, in which the stakeholders are giving me a list of items that can help fund items that maybe aren't funded. And we're looking at $64,000 in money that we're looking at reallocating for different programs that can be helpful for the city and the county. And then while we're working on that, we'll also have leftover requirements. We'll be able to get on to the upcoming 2023 funding process as we move forward with that. That's what I have for an update for Emergency Management. I'll stand by for any questions or concerns.
Thank you, Director, Councilors, Commissioners. Did a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City's looking for some money. You can find some. Or a reservoir.
We can have the conversation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Police Operations/Spillman. We have our chief, Lewiston Police Chief Jason Cusick to present to us. Chief, if you'd please just introduce yourself for the record, and then remember to speak up loudly and clearly for those listening at home. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Jason Cusick, Lewiston Police Chief. I want to start out by explaining out of my thanks and appreciation to Mark Hurd and the Office of Emergency Management. A lot of things you talked about were collaborations with the city as far as the radio projects at the high schools, which can be a huge benefit for communication, but also TAC-MID kits and the other items. So appreciate your efforts and your great collaboration, cooperation with us. This afternoon, I'm just here to give an update on our Spillman, and it's actually now being re-titled as Flex per Motorola. So if I start saying the word Flex, I'm referring to the same situation, the CAD. But they rebranded shortly. So the product has been in place since 1992. We're just coming up on a renewal, and that's where we're going. When I got here, I wasn't a big fan of Spillman, to be honest with you, and we started researching, looking into it, and we ended up talking to the vendor. So we ended up kind of looking at the contracts and realizing they've really kind of turned into a kind of a muddy situation over the years because of the contracts starting to overlaying with each other. So we've been working with the vendor in the county and even the tribe for the last several months, trying to kind of clean up the contract. So we've gotten to that point now. There really won't be any overlay anymore as far as shared costs, the way it's now being updated with the contracts, because each agency is going to be getting different kind of blocks of modules. So we kind of came to the decision that each department, meaning Lewiston PD, the sheriffs, and the tribe, will be paying their own bills instead of kind of having this cost-sharing, well, we'll pay 20% of this and 30% of that, you know. We just, we each have our own modules now. And then that's how the contract, right now, we're in the process of updating the contract itself through the city attorney's office and our IT office to make sure we're not kind of missing anything. And then one thing we realized that's never been in place is that there hasn't been a shared user agreement. And it's, we have it, it's like a two-paragraph document. It's extremely simple, that the, all the agencies will sign, just saying, yeah, we agree to it by the rules of Motorola, and that we won't, you know, do anything to anybody on the other side of the server, because we do still have a shared server. So with that, we've gotten the cost, and it works. I have to give a lot of credit to Suzanne Banks, who's been working on this project for months, and working on the prices, and making sure everything, the agreements are all in place, and that's where we're at. So as far as the costs go on, and this will be going to affect October 1st, the new fiscal year, so really, all I can speak to is to Lewiston PD, because again, the sheriff and the tribe are going to have their own costs. So as far as that going, the first bill, it's a five-year contract. The reason we're in a five-year contract is because it gives us, it locks the price in. If we don't, Motorola will raise the price on us 7% every year on out. So we'll do a five-year. Traditionally, we have done five-year. And one other thing I forgot to neglect, we also have to update the sole source because, even though we've been with them so long, because it's over a certain dollar amount, again, we had a sole source back from '15 to '20. For some reason, it never got renewed. So we're just renewing that. Basically, everything is just kind of getting renewed, cleaned up, and it's like starting from scratch again. So going forward, it should be much easier, say, five years down the road. So the first year cost for Lewiston PD, after 911 funds are applied, is that we'll pay on October 1st of this year $49,840.64. For years two, three, four, and five, the cost will go down to $38,415.64. The increase that first year from last year's cost is $4,382.71. But then, years two through five, we actually have a cost savings of $7,042.29. So really, at the end of the five-year contract in 2029, as opposed to ending in this year, we're actually going to have a savings of $28,169.16. Again, I go back to Suzanne Banks doing so much work and trying to work through the cost savings we have. And that's with adding approximately eight new modules that we have and updating the current software that we're using. One thing of note, though, that will be a joint cost, is in three years, we're going to be at the end of the cycle of the current server that all three agencies, you know, run their CAD systems through. That's going to be, right now, we're being told at an estimate about $103,000. So in about two years, we'll probably start moving into that realm where we're going to have to start discussing those costs, and that, like I said, will be a joint cost, a shared cost. So that's really about it as far as the update to Flex. Stand for any questions.
Commissioners, enter. So in two years, you said it was a server upgrade?
Yeah, the actual physical server. It'll be in three years. In two years, I figure we start discussing it. But yeah, it's actually going to be end of life per Motorola in three years.
Thank you. Councilors, Councilors, pick a matter. Thanks.
And so it's kind of similar. So the cost is just service, besides a router and stuff. It has nothing to do with vehicles or any of that. It's just the service for Motorola?
Yeah, all the costs, the ones they gave you, the five-year contract, is what they call their maintenance fees. So they provide the proprietary software that will run our CAD system, our computer aided dispatch, our records management system, things like that. They give that to us, but then there's maintenance costs every year. So that's just them making sure it's running, it gives us customer service, any updates, they'll push automatically, things like that, yeah.
Counselor Lakey?
There's no other option but a physical server? I mean, isn't there?
Today, I'd say yes. There are dispatch systems out there that are fully cloud-based, and I know Motorola is moving into that world, but they're not quite there yet. Now, to change out would be hundreds of thousands of dollars, yeah. Because I got a quote one time already, so.
Looks like it, Chief. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Next up, we have item C under Rule Number Four. That is the Joint Dispatch. We have Sheriff Scripture here. Director Reynolds and Chief Cusick are going to tag team this. I'll try to read the body language here, but if not, Bill, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record, the floor is yours.
I'm Bill Reynolds, Nez Perce County GIS Coordinator. I was kind of asked to kind of just go over some of the main aspects of this consolidation plan. So for the next four hours, we'll go through this document in detail. I'm not sure if you've read this document. You all should have received this. This is the PSAP, Consolidation Implementation Plan. And basically, it provides an outline for consolidation. And it is specific for us, as city Lewiston and Nez Perce County, to like, what would the process be to go through? It covers several main aspects that are required to run a dispatch center. This includes governance, management, contract agreements, organizational structure, human resources, operations, technology, and facilities. And those aspects are everything that makes a dispatch run, or an emergency communications center, sorry. As part of that process, we started with, this is, you know, pre-Chief Cusick and pre-new Fire Chief. The focus of that group was primarily to provide the right public safety resources to our public safety agencies, and getting the right information to the right person into the right location. And then another key element that we were really working on is to improve the general safety of emergency responders during a caller incident. Many of our responders, you know, Lewiston is a community that leads in this region in many aspects. Some of those aspects are in public safety response, with partnerships and MOUs with our neighboring agencies where we respond into other states or other counties. And so communications is vital, and during these responses, sometimes they're having to change channels on the radio several times to talk to the right dispatch center as they go in response. So that was another aspect that was discussed in this implementation plan, planning event, or as we planned. And finally, it was the improvement of relationships between agencies. I know that many of our agencies are very robust and are able to handle many things going on, but sometimes we do run thin during different operational periods and during different events during the year. And so that was another thing, is as we worked towards a unified public safety, the idea was to eliminate duplicate technology costs, to improve employees' relationships so that, you know, you can work well with others during these events regardless of the agency they come from. And as you know, one of the other things that was a key element that became very, we became very aware of as we came out of COVID and started this process, is just employee retention. Every agency in this region right now is struggling with employee retention for their dispatch centers or their communication centers. And it's a challenge right now to help support those folks that are basically our first line of communications during an event. So many of the things that we go through in this, just remind you, this is a blueprint that, you could actually take this blueprint and apply it to any kind of upgrade to your communication center, of just some of the things that need to be covered as you upgrade a communication center to if we're going to partner with other counties, other agencies, or across state lines. There's many questions in here that would need to be answered before you could complete that process, no matter what you decide to do there. And then finally, I guess the ask would be is for the city council and the county commissioners to maybe have, schedule a meeting where we can discuss, this may be more in-depth, to some of the concerns that our agencies have, some of the concerns that you may have as council members and commissioners, so that we could go through this and have a frank discussion on the pluses and minuses of consolidated dispatch. And then if we move forward, it would be up to the council and the commissioners to allocate money for a project manager. And this would be a two- to three-year process to get through all the documentation, the procedures, buying the equipment, facilities, and those aspects of a 911 center. Any questions? Did I cover everything?
Commissioners, Councilors? Counselor Lakey?
Just want to make sure I caught everything. Project manager, equipment, facilities are really what we, like, to move forward, we would need to determine how much we're paying for a project manager, who covers what expense. So those are the things. So is there, when we talked about being installed during COVID, like, was there anything done that we could work off of besides the plan from the consultants? I mean, was there buildings looked, you know, facilities looked at, those kind of things?
Yeah. Facilities were looked at, there was governance models. I think one of the big concerns that both the chiefs had and the sheriff were, is us being kind of the organizational entity that's creating this, is having a permanent seat on that board, even though the discussion is, is that if the chief of police is on that board, they represent kind of all law enforcement for how many of our agencies are involved. And the focus would be, of course, is a kind of a best-in-class service. We don't, there was a lot of discussion about making sure that there wasn't diminished services to Nez Perce County so that we're not getting the services we need to run our operations, and the chief of police not getting the services he needs so that he can run his operations. And so that was, and these are things that will be an ongoing discussion on how they do their standard operating procedures, how employees are retained, how employees are paid, to, you know, what kind of equipments in that back room to allow seamless communications between multiple agencies during a response.
So when we talk about a project manager, Bill, who do you see? Do you see bringing in somebody brand new that just comes in and says, this is what we need to do? Or are we bringing in a person already in a position that has the knowledge? I mean, again, every time we decide we're going to do this, we're picking county or city. So how do we make sure that we're getting that, those considerations? Because I feel like every time we come to the table, we're going to have those conversations. And so for me, a project manager that comes in and says, I have the data and the facts, here's what we need to do, so maybe not internal, but maybe I'm thinking of it incorrectly.
But I think from when Chief Hurd and Chief Michael Buss and Sheriff Scripture, when we were having these, the discussion leaned more towards a consultant from, like, the Mission Critical Partners people, that we would coordinate with them. You know, it was interesting, quickly, in many of those discussions, the discussion for governance, quickly, you know, kind of moved into a discussion on how do we get the best service for our dispatch center to provide to my, you know, my officers, my deputies, my firefighters? And that's, I think that's where that focus is going to be, really, the heavy lift, is creating procedures and policies so that, like you said, Sheriff Scripture, if he has something that's not working for his department, he's able to come to that agency, that entity, and say, you know, I need it to work this way for me. And then they can agree on a new procedure if that fits as a best practice and a best standard.
And then the only other thing that I had concern for is where we don't have next-generation 911. Is that kind of, I mean, cart before horse, where we need that capability to really, truly, as Mr. Cooper stated, like, we want to not have these calls bouncing and doing all those things that, yes, it would maybe come to us, but would it go to WICOM? Would it, you know, so is that a process that we need to push forward beforehand? Or does it, do you think that's not going to play a bigger role?
I would say it's all going forward together. We've already been reached out to by our neighboring state, Washington, to be a part of their next-gen solution. They're paying expense right now so that they can communicate with our state when we transfer calls back and forth, you know, from Sandpoint Court Lane to us down here. We are still on a selective router, and they're on a next-gen 911 solution in their state. And so they need to still pay for that selective router as well, and that's an expense they really want to get rid of. So they've talked, just in general, kind of conversations about, how about North Idaho comes with the state of Washington as a next-gen solution, which would, of course, accelerate the work we're doing over here on this side with fiber and broadband and with our equipment in the back room. I'll kind of answer some of those questions when we go into the emergency communications budget, so. budget, so.
I agree, Bill. I think, yeah, I don't expect, you know.
Did you introduce yourself?
I did not. Jason Cusick, Lewis, Chief of Police, sorry about that. I agree that, yeah, I think there's going to have to be some follow-up meetings with this. I don't know if commissioners are aware of it. I'm not a proponent of this plan, so I have multiple points operationally and fiscally. I don't think it is really the right fit, but that's why I think we're probably going to have to have some follow-up meetings so we can talk through some of these issues. Ultimately, it's going to be the decision of these two boards and whether this project's going to go through or not, so. But if you have any questions to me initially, I'm happy to answer.
If we're done with that, Bill, I'm going to have a step to the back of the room and ask Councilor Lick if she can handle the next one.
So we're going to move on to 8911 program. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, councilors, commissioners. Bill Reynolds, Nespris County GIS Coordinator, and also the Chair of our Emergency Communications Drake Powers Board. This is the shared board between the city of Lewiston and Espris County that handles all the expenditures for emergency communications in our county, for the 911 system to base radios in the dispatch center to CAD mapping. So we're also part of the flex expense too. We'll get, I'm sure, a bill to, that's one thing they don't forget to do. I just wanted to go through, I promised handouts from last year, since I didn't have handouts, I felt bad. So I, one item is our proposed budget for next year, if you have questions on that. And then I was just going to go over some of the highlights for what we have for completing this year and going into next year. Some of those things that are just regular things, primarily it's computer and monitor updates with new configurations right now being installed, LPD. This is always seems to be an ongoing thing. We see mostly in our updates, in our review of the systems, is about a three-year process of rotating these systems out. They just start to fail about three years. Our servers were on usually about a five to six-year rotation. And many of those aspects are covered, especially on the server side through grants through Idaho Public Safety Communications Commission. Another big maintenance issue we're working through is cybersecurity. As we move towards the cloud or towards next-gen 911 solutions, we become more vulnerable to cyber attack. And so we are investing right now in more and more procedures and equipment, hardware, software, that will allow our 911 system to not be penetrated or be vulnerable to attack. And then another big request we have is from the sheriff's office, they'd like a fourth position so they'll be able to be more of a resource for either LPD or Leighton County or others if they need a backup location. Other projects that we're looking at for next year is we'll be applying for a $500,000 grant for a statewide next-gen 911 project. Nespris County will be the lead agency for that project. The grant funds will be coming from the Idaho Public Safety Communications Commission. And this will be some of the preliminary mapping that will be continuing on for the next two years as our state prepares for next-gen 911. We're also looking at connecting to Bennewak County. Right now, our system supports Nespris County, the city of Lewiston, Lewis County, and Leighton County. Our system can support up to 500 or 400 positions. And Bennewak County, the state is really pushing more towards, if you're not going to consolidate physically, consolidate virtually through your system. And with the expanse of some fiber projects going on in the state, we're able to connect to these counties and then provide the 911 tones to them so that they can receive those calls for their counties. And of course, we have a lot of fiber projects going on. As many of you know, they're out for applications right now. Many of them will be, I hope, completed and out for review here in the next couple of weeks. In 2024, we will also be applying for a new Vesta system. Our Vesta system will be at end-of-life. And at that time, we'll be looking at their next-gen 911 solution. And that would put us in a position, so if we did go with the state of Washington or if our state comes up with a statewide next-gen solution, we would be ready for it. And then we're also, we're working with the two counties that are working with us as partners here. We have a GIS analyst we've been under contract with for the last two years under a grant. And we're proposing that that position and then Dave Taylor's 911 coordinator position be funded with funds from those county as well. So we will be billing them a certain percentage of their salaries in order to compensate for some of the work we do. There's just, sometimes there's just no way that Dave is going to get out of a phone call from Lewis County or Leighton County, you know, asking, hey, what's your opinion on the problem we're having right here? Sometimes it's very helpful because it identifies something that may end up being a system-wide update that's needed or corrections needed. Other times, it's just, hey, you just need to reboot this and plug this in and you're good to go. But we feel like it's appropriate, since they're calling on him occasionally for services and for advice, that maybe they support him in the financing of that position. And then we're, and then we're, lastly, is what's coming up is our 911, it's Emergency Communications Act. It is very dated. It has not been updated since 2004, primarily for handling of mobile phones and track phones. So legislation, there's a legislative committee putting together a proposed update to that that's going to the governor here next week.
Yes.
It'll be going to the governor next week for review. We have a legislator from AM in Idaho that has expressed interest in supporting that bill and taking it to the floor next year as we try to get that updated. I can't recall his name, but they're very enthusiastic about getting the 911 laws updated to what technology has surpassed them on. Some of these things that will be updated is, of course, adding next-gen 911 is one of the services that can be expended to support in our state. They're looking at upping the 911 fee that we pay to $3. Some of that money will be used for grants, some of that money will be used for next-gen core services, and then some of that money will be returned to counties to support our local systems. The other thing we're looking at is there needs to be updates for systems. For instance, like if we decided that we were going to do a unified or consolidated 911 center between the state of Washington and Idaho, there's no law really saying that we can do it, and there's no law that says we can't do it, but we probably need some direction there on how if a consolidated system was supposed to go across state lines, how that would work. You know, sometimes we look at, like, Pullman and Moscow are very tied together because of their location, and likewise with us with Clarkston. And then finally, just the expense of these systems is, you know, just keeps going up. And part of that is that our dispatchers are being inundated with all the information that we see on our phones or becoming available to them in the 911 center. And so we have to capture that data, we have to record that data, and we have to provide in a way to our dispatcher so that they know what's important information and what stuff to discard. Is there an emergency situation? Things have to be clear and concise so they can get that information to that public safety responder. And so that's some of the critical issues that we, as a board, try to support. And we, as the folks on the technology side, we look at solutions that will support those activities for them. Any questions?
Councilors, commissioners?
My only question is, Senator, and that has to go back to the previous deal. Hopefully, not later, but sooner, we can have that sit down and have a demonstration, a presentation by our consultant or whatever. But the longer we languish in this what-if scenario, the more the state is going to start telling us what to do. I just assume lead rather than be dragged.
That was actually a conversation that came up in our last, the last IPSCC meeting as they talked about funding. One of the things that came up was from the state was, are we going to require consolidations throughout our state if we're going to be funding the next-gen 911 solution? And those discussions have gone on for several years, but, you know, in many states, horse consolidations have happened, and it's been the state that just comes in and says, you know, you're no longer a center, you are a partner with them, you know.
Thanks, Bill.
Any other questions?
Any more questions for the deal get away?
Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark. Hey, councilors, next up, we have item E, airport. We have our airport director here, Michael Isaacs, and one of his board members here. But Mike, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record. Remember to speak up loudly and clearly so those listening online can hear you. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Mayor, commissioners, councilors, I have a presentation. I don't know if your IT department can load it up for me? Ready to go? Awesome. Yeah, with me here is Joe Gish as well, one of the airport board members, and then Sheila Bondar, Deputy Director of Finance and Administration. So we have a total of 11 people here. Well, before I get into that, I want to just give you a recap. I was here just on May 1st to go through basically what we've been doing the last couple of years, because I haven't brought it up to you. We've been covering our airport budget with COVID relief funds for the last couple of years, and we got quite a bit of things done. We have over $10 million worth of projects that we got completed since I've been here in the last three years. So one of the latest ones is the, it was about $3.5 million for our South Taxi Lane. And that South Taxi Lane project just got completed last week, and it's now available to have 20 new hangars be built there. We already have a couple of interested folks that are looking to be there. So those will help generate additional property taxes and build our footprint in the community, in the aviation community. For here, we just, to recap what we have going at the airport, we have 11 employees, and we staff it from 6:00 a.m. until 9:30 p.m. right now. It all revolves around our air service. Whenever those flights are here, when we get our morning flight and our late evening flight back, we'll be there because we have to be. We have to be there for every single flight, every single day. That's where these 11 staff go. So Sheila and I, we take care of the, all the accounts, payables, receivables, our taxes, insurance, grant administration, audit, human resources, and then we oversee 80 leases. The city and the county have the luxury of having departments do that, so we run pretty thin on doing that. That's what both of us do, and then the rest of the crew, they are taking care of all those maintenance items that we talked about prior, as well as being firefighters now. We took that over. In addition, this year, we added, well, last year, we added shuttle service, so now we're going up and picking up our students at WSU and U of I. They are on demand within a day's notice. We'll come get you and take you to the airport. And then last two months ago, we opened up our cafe in-house, so we have a gift shop that we run primarily for cruise ship passengers, which are taking a large part of our seats right now as a cruise ship. So staff run pretty busy, doing all kinds of different various jobs. And how do you advance it? So I would say the success starts at the top. I got a couple of quick pictures to show you. We have on the left side Lori Wilson, who's training in a couple of new greeters. We just had five new greeters join the team to welcome all these cruise ship folks that come to the airport. So we have, they're standing in the cruise ship lounge that was remodeled here a year and a half ago. And we have these folks that are from our community, and they're there to greet these folks, so it's pretty good. Lori actually just started working for American Cruise Lines, so she is now head and headfirst into helping our tourism in the community. On the right side, we have our chairman, Gary Peters, who's also really invested in the airport. This picture was taken a couple of weeks ago where he took Mayor Johnson and I down to see Governor Little and explain to him all the importances of what other states are doing to preserve and protect their air service. So the world has changed a lot in the air service world. We got to stay on top of it, and that's what our board members and our chairman are doing. So this is the budgets, the capital and the operating in a nutshell. And we have, we broke $1 million for operating revenue for the first time. It was $808,000 last year. So we're raising money, however, we're spending money as well, and we're about $700,000 short for operating costs. So the request is 351,115 per sponsor for the operating. On the capital side, we have another shortfall, as you can imagine. It's only $405,000. However, just on Friday, I received an email from the state that they have $558,000 of money available for covering capital costs. Now, I don't know which of those all are. Some of the capital, and we'll go, I'll break out where these monies are going in the next couple of slides, but that $202,000 request may be reduced with this new funding that's available.
From the Idaho Aviation and Airnotics, Mike?
It is, yep. Idaho Aeronautics. It was $200,000 last year. They received $35 or $39 million. Commercial airports received $558,000 of that, $39 million. So as a whole, the Airport Managers Association, we're going to be meeting on this again. We think that commercial air service has horrendous, and you can see how much, this isn't just a wish list, this is what it takes to run the airport. There's a lot of requirements to meet, to make the TSA and the FAA's requirements. It just, that's what it takes. I think that we're going to be petitioning to get more of that $39 million as a group. So this slide is, I lay this out here just so I could talk about this for hours, but this is our capital revenue. And the takeaway here is it's extremely complex. It's got a lot of moving targets, a lot of, the grants, for example, the FAA pays 93.75% of all these projects that we do, these big ticket, our $2.5 million of our South Taxi Lane was done with, 93.75% funding. However, they keep the last 10% until the project's closed out. Takes years to close out projects before the FAA is happy with all the paperwork. So here, we pay our contractors, and then we sit and hold $250,000 for this project till we get the money for it. And that's just, and then we add that project is over multiple fiscal years, so we have to guess how much of each project and each grant is spent in each fiscal year. So it gets really kind of like a crystal ball to try to figure it all goes, where it all settles, when the dust settles. I say this because there could be a time where the airport has a cash flow for a short time until we exceed the end of that grant money. In the past few years, we've been lucky with the COVID relief funds that were there. However, we don't have that now, so we're on a much finer line. We're still on a mission critical to build our infrastructure and grow as fast as we can, as the grants are available. And that's the other thing that came with this COVID relief. They pushed out another, for the next three years, we double our grant money. So we get $1 million a year entitlement money. It comes to the airport for infrastructure every year because we have at least 10,000 people getting on a plane and flying out of here. That's doubled. Now essentially, we get $2 million for the next three years, which we thought, yay, we can double our. Now essentially, we get two million dollars for the next three years, which we thought, yay, we can double our, we can really catch up now. However, asphalt went from a hundred dollars a ton to two hundred dollars a ton. So now our buying power just got cut severely. So we're not gaining double, we're gaining, but we're not gaining as much as we thought we hoped to with all this additional money coming in. As a general rule, airports that have a hundred thousand passengers, they have enough funding that comes in through passenger facility charges and parking lot, all the concessions, that kind of stuff, where they can float and cover themselves. Where, where last year we had forty-one thousand passengers. So going in the right direction, however, we, we still got ways to go before we float. So for local capital projects, those are ones that are not covered with FAA money. There's a storage facility that's planned on Old Gun Club. It costs about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to put a fence around it. We already have the millings. We just had the, the top soil stripped. So about two hundred and twenty thousand, maybe a little less now. And that opens up for storage. Once it's full, it'll bring in two hundred thousand dollars a year. If you look at any of the storage units around, they're all full. So that seems like a good use of them, of that property right close to the airport.
Is it Gun Club?
I'm talking about Old Gun Club. Yep, over by CCI. There's that mound up high that overlooks the new South Taxi Lane. We have some terminal doors that we deferred. They're about fifty-five thousand dollars. They're the outside entrances on the three sides of the main public entrances. They're obsolete. They're on borrowed time. They don't make parts for them. We can't get anybody to work on them. So that's what they cost. The Lloyd District, I don't have a lot of details on this, although I met with Barney and, and our water department. There's a couple of parcels of airport property that are receiving Lloyd water, but don't have it in their district officially. They need some money and for planning or administration fees and not surveys possibly. I'm not sure what that's for. But it would, he estimated about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars to make it right. So in order for us to lease this little piece of property, and Pacific Cataract is one of them, and then there's a little lot next to it. And for us to lease that lot, you would have to have this done. So it makes sense that we start planning. And then the last one, or the second to the last there is a grass strip. There's a lot of folks that use bush planes here with the big tundra tires. And they land in the grass. They land in the grass because it costs a lot of their thirty-five hundred bucks a tire for those, for those bush planes. So they land in the grass and they don't wear them out as much. Bush planes are pretty popular. We're in a great location for it. So we're looking at designating an area for, for grass strip users. We're also looking for hand-me-down vehicle. I have one vehicle that runs our shuttle up that has three hundred and twenty thousand miles on it. And we had a nice expedition that the Missouri County donated us a couple of years ago. And that has over two hundred, I think it's like two hundred and twenty thousand miles on that. So we really appreciate it. We're using them. If you have any extra leftover hand-me-downs, we'll gladly take one or two. And then on the twenty-five, just to look ahead, we're, we're looking at our tractors, ten years old. We'd like to get a chip seal. The parking lot's getting a little tired, a vehicle replacement, and we'd like to keep our HVAC clean. Those are some of the bigger ticket items that we're looking for next budget year. I just wanted you to let you know that we're, we're planning these things ahead. So we, we don't have any surprises. The capital improvements plan on the FAA side, we're doing, and we should get the grant offer signed on Thursday for taxiway reconstruction. That's our main taxiway that goes to our main runway. So that one has to get done. Terminal study would certainly help us to determine what the lifespan is left of what we have. And does it make sense to remodel it or does it make sense to construct a new one? The reason that this is pushed out now, I would have hoped to wait till we get closer to the seventy-five thousand passenger load level. But there's a lot of grant funding available specifically for terminals right now. So it's good timing for us to petition for it if we were to have it. It makes sense to take a look at it right now. And then we don't have a blower, a snow blower at the airport of any value. And, and we have serious problems anytime there's more than four inches of snow burying our runway lights out there. So that's one of the other big ticket items. It's, it's all covered ninety-three point seven five percent on our grant. And then the coming, the next following year, fiscal year twenty-five, runway rejuvenation, rejuven seal keeps our main runway looking good, and it still is looking good. Runway lighting to raise those lights, the terminal design, if we're so to choose to go that route. And then looking to upgrade our nineteen seventy-nine international plow truck. That's our number one plow truck out there is a nineteen seventy-nine. That's what's looking in the future. So I've been asked this by the board, what happens if there is no money? What, how, what happens if there's no subsidy request? What do we do? Well, we certainly cut back on services. We're not shuttling anymore. We, we shut off our marketing. The board decided to put a hundred thousand dollars a year in marketing because that's really where we support our air service. And if we don't show specifically for the students in the colleges that have a turnover, they don't even know it exists. So blowing up their phone with marketing, targeted marketing is a good way to capture this and, and keep our business. We're in competition and that marketing goes a long way. We would cut that out. We would cut deferred maintenance. Anything that doesn't need to be done, won't get done. Stop doing it. And then if we have to, we reduce staff. On the capital expense reductions, we would have obviously stopped the storage lot. We would bide our time with the terminal doors and we would stop some engineering planning. So we'll do what we have to, but we have such a head of steam right now and we're going in the right direction, hoping that you can support us. And this is why the airport's worth, the economic impact is seventy-three and a half million dollars of twenty nineteen numbers. This is a report the state did in twenty twenty. So eighty percent of that, over almost fifty-nine million dollars of it is because of commercial air service. That's worth a pause. Commercial air service is worth fifty-eight point eight thousand dollars a year. That, that's staggering to me when I, when I look at that number and how important commercial air service is. And the, and this is why we went down to see the governor, because there's not enough planes, there's too many planes, there's not enough pilots. There's five hundred planes parked in the ground because there's no pilots to fly them. So the one, the squeaky wheel, the one that stands at the highest and hands out and makes the most money is where those planes go. And that's what cities, we've, we've all heard this for, for months, if not years now. If you don't, if you don't support your air service, your commercial airline, they're not going to be there. So I would say that we need to be prepared to look at that potential here. We're, we're looking at getting a morning flight back. It, things are going in the right direction. However, we, we don't know what, what the next highest bid is. And we don't know how close we are. That's why we have a consultant to keep Lewiston on their face, on their front burner, so to speak. So we can, we can keep, keep our air service. Because that's worth fifty-nine million dollars to the community. But that's what I have for you today. I wish I had better news. It is good news. However, it needs support to keep it going.
I think it's great news. Thank you, Director. Commissioner?
Mayor, Mike, your visit with, excuse me, your visit with the governor. Last time I visited him with the airport, he was very ignorant about our airport here. Wouldn't listen to any comments about why we don't have interstate air service in the state. He just doesn't seem to get the fact that not all of us live in Boise and fly out of Boise. I, I just want to know what his feeling was towards you when you went and visited him. Because somewhere along the line, he's got the bad, a bad attitude about our airport. I have my own ideas of where it came from, but I think we need to work with him, put some pressure on him somewhere to start coming up with grants or with money out of that billion-dollar budget they've got to kind of help some of these airports around our region and, and the state.
Absolutely right. It's not just Lewiston. It's Twin Falls, it's Pocatello, it's Moscow-Pulmon. The Boise flight to Moscow-Pulmon is subsidized.
No, and Pullman gets subsidized from Washington. Somehow those legislators seem to be able to get their hands on a lot of money and they're pushing towards that. I question why ours aren't doing the same. Yes, that's something we need to address.
Could I make one comment on that?
Mike's yours?
We had the opportunity when Moscow received sixteen million dollars worth of COVID money and we received, Lewiston received two point five million? Sixteen, two and a half million? We called foul. It was, it was a typographical error. It was a numbering mistake that was done in the formula. And it affected airports all the way around the United States. We raised it to our constituents and their support was, well, some of our airports that we support have sixteen million dollars, like Moscow. So we were losing, we were losing some, some ground, getting support when we, when we requested help for that. But you're right, we need, we need political support. We need it.
Counselor, like you.
Thanks, Mike. I've been trying to follow as best I can things that are happening. And I just saw that Boise actually lost quite a few connections through Alaska. Alaska seems to be just struggling in general, especially with pilot shortages. And while I believe that our focus should be on, you know, building that relationship with the governor's office so that we get support just in our area in general, not just for the airport, but we would include you in that. And I, I think that you've done a really good job of, we've been pulling up our own bootstraps, doing what we need to do to make those adjustments. But it's very apparent that we keep our international airports honest. More, I've, I've noticed that the more regional flights that are lost are internationals like Spokane. And they, their prices raise at the same time because it's supply and demand. So now they've got the customers locked in to have to use those airports. So I, I've appreciated what the board and you have done to try to really keep the flights we have. I mean, obviously bringing in United was huge. And I, I completely get that people want to get to Boise and Seattle. And I think that what, from what I've seen, you guys are trying to keep that an open line of communication. And, but I do think we need to commit to the fact that we just need to keep flights here in some fashion. Because if we lose it, people think, you know, Moscow-Pulmon and, and Spokane is the answer. If we go away, those prices will just skyrocket as well.
Counselor Spickler?
Thank you, Mayor. So as far as increasing revenue for twenty-four, twenty-five, all I, maybe I missed it, but what I heard is hoping we get a morning flight and storage units? Did I miss something? Is efforts to try to increase the revenue?
Oh, we're, we're also looking to develop our lots that are available. We had, we had lined up a hotel. We had a realtor. One of the councilors, commissioners, excuse me, flew down to Florida on her own dime to secure a, a, you know, outside supplier or supporter for a hotel. They needed a local support as well. And we had that just before, we were working on the contract and economy took a turn and so they backed out. So we're, we're looking to develop Hathaway Park. That'll generate quite a bit of revenue. We just opened up a, a project that sat dormant for fifteen years because no one was willing to, to build the infrastructure, to hammer and, and blow up a corridor for all the utilities. So all these twenty hangars can go, we can fill that up now. We have the, there's a lot over, there's a couple of lots over by Pacific Cataract that are, we're looking to fill as well. We also, we, all these eighty leases we have, we all have them on our CPI adjustments, consumer, consumer price index adjustments. So those are going up and that should probably go up about eight percent next year. So pretty substantial. But yeah, we're, we're working very hard to look at being fair, but to, to everyone, but still looking to generate revenue. Yes.
Counselor? So on the, a lot of talk about the cruise ship and the amount of travelers that come through. So what, in general, how much do they actually bring as, as revenue to the airport?
Well, they're filling up about forty percent of the seats right now. So that part is, our, our noon flights don't work for business travelers. You have a business flight and it's only one flight a day, not going to work. So we're, we're losing the business travelers. However, the planes are full. They're full of cruise ship passengers coming in. And our Delta flight with the Comfort Plus and the first class, business class, you call it, they're filled up as well with these types of folks. Fluent customers, travelers. And then we also help fill their time as they're waiting for their flight. They have helicopter tours and plane rides. And we're trying to get established with our local wineries so we can have them stick around. And several do. Several of them stick around for a couple of days or they get a car and they meander themselves over to one of the national parks.
How many might exist that that happens?
It starts in March and they, they say it goes till December, but it seems like October is when it shuts off. Yeah, it's, it's pretty substantial. There's over fifteen thousand passengers this year.
I'd like to comment on Chairman Beck's concerns with the state of Idaho. One of the asks that we made of the Idaho Transportation Department, which houses the Idaho Division of Aeronautics. Scott Stokes is also at our meeting. He's the chairman for the, director for the Idaho Transportation Department, was to consider looking at creating some kind of a commercial division within the Division of Aeronautics. Because there isn't one today. Some states have them, some states don't have them. But at least if we could just highlight that and put a little bit of an effort into that so that we can develop, you know, commercial air service in the state. And there are a lot of easier ways to finance that. You know, for example, the airplanes, they land and they take off. So they only pay taxes within the footprint of that airport. And rather than put those taxes into the general fund, maybe reinvest them in the airport, you know, and maybe do the same thing here. So we gave them some ideas to look at. We also had with us a consultant from the Idaho Chamber of Lines who went with us and is very interested in this. And so they're keeping their finger on the pulse and we're going to continue to work with them and others to, you know, push this. It's, it's pretty critical in the state.
Thank you for that. You're all welcome at any time for a tour. If you want to come out and see the operation, see the airfield, be more welcome to invite you out there. Noon time is a fun time. We got two flights coming and going. It's, it's pretty exciting about anywhere from ten thirty to one thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have sanitation, item F. Director Dustin Johnson and the City Lewiston Director, if you'd introduce yourself for the record. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, County Commissioner, Commissioner right now. I also, for sanitation garbage, if anytime you want to tour, we're more than happy to let you come take a look at our facilities too. It's not as attractive as the airport, but we do offer tours. Here to tie, to talk about sanitation, solid waste services, particularly the, the shared services between the county and the city. In your packets, you received kind of an outline of the existing services contracts. I think that's generally what I'm going to highlight in today's. I think that's generally what I'm going to highlight in today's discussion. As you may be aware of, that most of the services as far as sanitation go are contracted services outside of other entities or private agencies. So the ones that I want to call out in particular are Assotin County. So Assotin County is where our, the bulk of our waste goes to. And so the, the contract we have with Assotin County is for the tipping fee. Currently it was negotiated in two thousand sixteen and it is forty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents a ton. And that is a, a rolling ten-year contract, which will be up in twenty-five, I believe is when that is, yeah, June of twenty twenty-five. And so, um, having negotiated from the other side of the river, now I'm negotiating it on this side of the river. There's not much secret to the, to the, to how this is negotiated. Assotin County has to report all of their financials and they have closure and post-closure costs that they have to carry and report that to the state of Washington. And so at any point, we simply go to them and say, what's your updated tipping fee based off of fuel and labor and everything else? And so I haven't had a conversation with them, uh, at least in the last two years. But, you know, I would expect with the cost of everything, it will go up. Last I talked to them, it was a couple dollars a ton, not too much. A, a lot of this stuff was built in on the front end. So I think that landfill is scheduled to expand. They have a couple more cells on that side of the road and they'll move to the other, move the offices to the other side. So I think it was last forecasted about twenty fifty-three before they have to figure out what to do with their waste after that. So I'm sure we will be, Nespers County and the City Lewiston will play a role in how that, what their plan is from there. But as I can assure you, it probably won't be you and it probably won't be me when they make that switch over in twenty fifty-three. The other one that's a significant and even more urgent than that is the Latau sanitation, Clearwater Composting. That contract is set to, the city has to give them notice if they want to continue it by the end of this calendar year, so December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. If the city chooses not to extend that contract, it will be set to expire at the end of next year, so December of, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. The city uses that, well, both city and county use that for particularly yard waste. City uses it for their biosolids for composting out there. And so for the city's perspective, we would obviously need to find out where we would take those too. Technology, when it comes to biosolids, technology has changed from when this contract was little, at least, and technology and our own technology in-house, uh, as far as the upgrades, the wastewater plant has, has changed in the last couple of years. And so we've had some conversations throughout the, you know, DEQ and even University of Idaho to try and see what, what our options could be and maybe some more reinvestment in the plant itself to see where we go. So that one is, is a large contract and I think we'll have a lot of conversations with Clearwater Compost and where we want to go with that. Outside of that, those are the two big contracts that are set to be expiring in the next eighteen months or two years. I think about the time, last time we talked, Sunshine Disposal, SDI, we renewed that contract. So that contract is current. SDI is the private firm, uh, company that does the collection for us, hauls it to the, to the transfer station as well as the recycling. So that one is pretty set. The only other thing I wanted to update you on is the, uh, transfer station. If nobody's doing anything tonight at six o'clock. On the agenda for the City Council, it, it's, uh, the transfer station scales are set to recommend award for the replacement of those scales. A little backstory is those scales have been delayed and delayed and delayed mostly because of COVID and trying to get materials and trying to get contractors out there. We finally got the bid specs tightened up to a point where we could get good bids. We got good bids and so tonight we're looking to award those bids. So, uh, the transfer station, it's a twenty-three-year-old building. We now, these, these scales were set to be replaced, I think, ten years ago. We're finally going to get those replaced. Uh, once we get those scales replaced, we'll be moving forward with a, the, the floor within the transfer station will be our next large capital project at the transfer station. Outside of that, there's not much else that, you know, small maintenance issues. But, um, those are kind of the high points for contracts and sanitation. So I, I stand for any questions if there are any.
Questions?
Yeah, just out of idle curiosity, you got any updated paperwork I could take back so I can massage my budget?
Uh, are you talking about which one, for the ton, or the stuff that we send? I can get you the most current stuff I can email you.
Thank you.
Eight point seven percentage referring to, I think he wants to up that to nine point seven.
We can accommodate that.
Thought that was it.
I was going to say, everything is based off of the interlocal agreement and so we can, we can give you the tonnages and everything that we've got. Yep.
Councilors, Councilor Spickmark?
Um, in this, did that also include the recycling and?
Yeah, the recycling is the next, I mean, it, it is part of that contract. So SDI does, um, collect, bail and I'm not sure if they're responsible for calling, but they, they are the, the agency that does the recycling. And so we, that will be the next, um, thing that we need to have a conversation. I'll be bringing back, um, since it's a contract, it's set rate, all the terms are in it. But I think, um, I think we need to have a, I don't know if this council has had a conversation on recycling. If you remember, it was right when I was starting, probably before this council, but the, the demand for recycling plummeted, so, um, the prices for the commodities were, were nothing. So there was a, a, a community poll and the, and the community voted to subsidize recycling on the short term. In the last year's budget, we got rid of that recycling subsidy because it, it, we, we made that money back up. We're still, we're still feeling the ramifications of that. It, it's, it's, to be blunt, recycling doesn't pay for itself. It needs to be subsidized somewhere along the way, whether it's a different commodity, like there was a period of time where cardboard recouped, cardboard and metal recoup a lot of the plastics and things like that. It's still out of whack. I mean, and, and so whether it's subscription fees or alternative material prices, they, they have to subsidize it. And so there's been periods of time where, you know, and I've had these conversations with mayor where we're, we are, we are, the, the rate money is subsidizing the recycling. If that, I mean, and that's, that's kind of how it is industry-wide, but I think the council should probably have a, a deeper conversation about why it is, what the market has played out over the last year or two and just kind of, I'm not even going to try and forecast it because it's, it's been all over the map. But to just give you a, a bigger picture of what that stuff is looking at, we're locked into rates and so nothing is, there's really nothing up for discussion unless you want to go that direction.
Garbage in, garbage out.
Okay, Director, let's move on to Southway Bridge. Item G, please.
Southway Bridge. So Southway Bridge, for those who may be listening right now, uh, Southway Bridge is owned by the four surrounding agencies. So that's the Lewiston, Nespers County, Assotin County and City of Clarkston. And so the interlocal agreement that was signed way back in the eighties when the bridge was constructed was basically the agencies split it four ways. So the, um, you know, that interlocal agreement, you know, as far as street sweeping and plowing and signs and lights and dealing with the expansion joints, that's all broken out accordingly. So each agency does, I would say, a really good job of taking care of the tasks that they do. At the end of the year, the City of Lewiston manages, is kind of the, the clearinghouse. So everybody provides invoices and, and hours and costs. And so then we just split it, we take all those costs, divide them by four, and then we, we divvy up the money at the end of the year. And that's how we've been doing it for forty years now. So things have been working pretty well with those agencies. The state of Idaho, ITD, does the bridge inspections. So federally, all bridges need to be inspected every two years. Uh, and so ITD does that, they do the inspections, they notify either Nespers County or the City Lewiston to do traffic control. They come out and they do it and they go and then they, they mail us the, the inspections. Every five years there, it's federally required to do an underwater inspection. Same deal, they come in, they do it, uh, and then mail us the inspection reports. And so when my counterparts get these inspection reports, we review the inspection reports and we look at what, what's been identified. And most of the time it's a bolt on one of the signs was loose, somebody should go tighten it. Or there was a utility box on the Washington side, somebody should put that cover back on the box. And so we, we take care of most of those. In the two thousand twenty, uh, no, the twenty, well, the most recent underwater inspection report, there was some scour issues identified on Pier Three and Pier Four. It's, it's indicated as a medium, not a, it's not an urgent matter, but if you know anything about maintaining anything, it's a medium concern can turn into a, a urgent concern if you don't address it. And so this is, uh, basically there is a, what do they call it, a steel, um, basically a, uh, just a steel sheeting covering one of the, the footings. There was two of the four sides on Pier Three were shown missing that sheeting and none of it on Pier Four. So I'm not clear if there was ever any on Pier Four, if they didn't include it, uh, and why it was, was damaged or missing on Pier Four. So my recommendation, I brought it up at the MPO, I've, I think I've communicated to my, my peers, uh, over at the Washington side and, and Roy with the county, that I think City Lewiston can just basically go out there, um, and ask for an engineer to take a look at this, uh, do, do some analysis and kind of treat it like if you were familiar with when we did the, the, the overlay on top of the bridge. It started out, I think about two thousand fifteen, the, the agencies put together their money, brought, hired an engineer, did an analysis, brought back to the council and the commissioners saying, here's, here's yours, here's your likely scenarios of which, which route you wanted to go. We made a decision, then we designed it, then we constructed it. And that took five years. I don't think this is anywhere near that, but I would like to have, um, a bridge engineer, engineer take a look at it. So as I was drafting this report for this meeting, I realized I did not include this in my budget, so I should probably include it in my budget first before I ask. But I, I'm, I'm thinking, uh, for the FY twenty-four, that we, e- each party prepare to throw, throw ten thousand dollars each. So that gives us forty, fifty thousand dollars, uh, to reach out to an engineer, uh, kind of give us a spitball estimate of what, what we could be looking at, um, and then, and then move forward in twenty-five with the design and potential. I mean, I don't, I'm not even going to try and tell you what the cost would be. The issue is it's underwater, so our staff is not, not good at doing stuff underwater. So, um, we would just come back to you and give you the update when, when time is ready. So that's, that's all I have really on the Southway Bridge.
Director Johnson, I'm going to see if the Nespers County Road Department Director, Roy Hill, would like to share some words with us on that. Roy, your choice.
Uh, really, I don't have any updates over what Dustin had, other than on the engineering. I'd actually reached out to Dan Gorley at ITD Bridge and they may be able to help us out on that.
That's good news. Thank you.
My hearing is working better this time, otherwise I thought you said the seals have made their way all the way up to the Southway Bridge now, so. Chasing the fish. Come on, folks. All right.
Thank you, Director. Next up, we have the courthouse update presentation. Chairman Beck?
Want me to stand up there or do it here or?
Um, you can sit there, just work, you have to speak up loud because folks are going to want to hear what you have to say. And then, do you have a slide presentation?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Chairman Beck?
So we are at the stage right now where we are, uh, waiting to get our pier blocks driven into the foundation, uh, or pre-foundation. Those pier blocks are supposedly right around seven hundred of them will be going into the, into the construction site. It takes, it's going to take three weeks. We've gone a week now, but two more weeks for the engineers to get the design, get it approved and everything properly. And there, there will be seven weeks of pounding to put those pier blocks in. They only can do about, uh, you know, a hundred, maybe a hundred a week. So it'll take at least seven weeks to get those seven hundred in there. Now, as you know, we've, uh, we've already taken, uh, the building down and it's, they've been checking for any, uh, soil saturation of things that may need to come out of there and, and so far they haven't found any. So that's good news. So that's also slowed down the process a little bit. One thing I'd like to mention while they're pounding, there'll be a, you'll probably feel it and hear it if you're close by. So hopefully they'll minimize that, they'll be able to get those in and, and buffer some of that sound and vibration. Other thing on the issue on, uh, why we're not looking at the, answer the young lady's question about, uh, the columns, we're building a new building. It's not going to look like the old building. We'll have things from the old building that will go into our, into our courtrooms and also we'll have the horse and rider, the statue that will go out front. But the other things we've looked at, it's such an extra cost to try and implement some of that into a new structure, we, we didn't go that way. I don't know other than that, Lieutenant Center has something to say about it, but we're trying to keep the budget under control. You start taking whole things down and trying to retrofit a building, you're starting to add extra cost on it. So we took some of those things that we knew we could do and some of the historic benches for the courthouse for retrofitting those in. There's a few other things that we have, but we just couldn't tear the whole building apart, reconstruct it or retrofit it into the new structure. Take any questions? I was going to compliment everybody for having patience with our parking situation. It, it's not perfect and it will not be perfect for quite a while. And, uh, just, you know, please, come the twentieth of June, there's going to be a certain date that everybody has to go to the treasurer's office. If you could like pay your bills online or use drop boxes associated around a county, it sure would help the traffic congestion because there's some people, no matter what you say, they're going to take and want to pay it at the courthouse. Well, parking is extremely limited, so if you could find an alternative way, I think Missy's here, she's probably got a whole list of things you could do that would soften that, so please, now have some patience. It's going to be two years. Everybody's already saying, I'm sure the, the city's getting the same request about Main Street being worked on. Well, our courthouse is being worked on too, so patience is a virtue. Try it if you can. Seldom in a, in a woman, but it's never in a parking lot situation, I can tell you that. We've had numerous fender benders already because people come in with great big long vehicles and then they can't get out of there and then they're jockeying around and anyway. Patience, please.
Is that it, Mr. Chairman?
That's all I have right now.
Thank you. Counselors, we're moved on, finished a new business. First item is City Councilor comments. Are there any City Councilor comments to share today? No? Okay, Mayor's going to pass on that too. We'll jump right to the back to the Nespers County Commissioner comments. Chairman Beck or Commissioner Center, do you have any additional comments to share with us today?
I just want to thank the city for meeting with us. We appreciate that. I look forward to these opportunities that we have to set and talk about issues that cross both, both our paths. So thank you very much, Mayor. Counselors? I'd like to compliment the mayor and his staff for working with us on the courthouse. Do appreciate that, sir. Great job of collaboration and project. The courthouse is, along with Main Street and whatever else is going on in this community is, is going to make it, shape up a lot. is going to make it, shape up a lot, and I do appreciate your work with us.
You're welcome. Do you have a motion to adjourn, Commissioner Center?
Sure, I'll make that motion to the city-county meeting adjourn.
Seconded by Commissioner Center, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to adjourn discussion. Bring that, goes in paper, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The post-motion passes, we stand adjourned. Thank you.